The city council meeting to order, if you could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could turn and face a flag for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Just to announce to the public that we do have our special annual proxy for Councilperson Cassidy. Santa Claus has come tonight for Councilperson Cassidy, but he will answer to Councilperson Cassidy through the evening for the record.
Great improvement over Councilperson Cassidy.
I'm sorry you missed the photo. So at this time, if you could do the roll call of councilpersons, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Lehman?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Podak?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
All are present. Minutes of the previous council meeting. A motion to approve them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Baker, a second by Mendoza, to approve the previous council meeting minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Abstain.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Oh, oh, oh.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Alrighty, they do pass communications.
I don't have anything other than to wish Tom Lake a very happy retirement and being on council from me to and by everybody else.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Alright. A report of committees. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met this evening before regular council meeting in council chambers. The finance director updated us that he and the safety service director have been meeting with department heads and preparing for year end, particularly focusing on closing out of blanket purchase orders and planning for next year. He's also doing some in-depth scrutiny over those open purchase orders with his staff and anticipate that that will put us in a good position to start calendar year 25. He provided us with November financials. Cash position for the city was $21.6 million in the bank. Of that 4.4 million has been encumbered, and that leaves the city with $17.1 million unencumbered. November reports, the committee primarily focused on a look at revenue. The director notified us that he anticipates that income tax will be over 100% for calendar year 2024, and we discussed once again that enterprise funds are behind expectations, the original budget anyways, although we knew they were going to be trending a little bit behind due to lower usage and also due to increases being passed a little later than we had anticipated. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 21st, 5:30 in council chambers.
Thank you very much. Public Affairs Committee.
The Public Affairs Committee met this evening and reported that the candidacy informational forum was successful. We discussed hosting more generalized meetings to have additional opportunities to speak with the public. More information on this will be forthcoming. We also discussed introducing an onboarding packet for new council members that I will email to all of council tomorrow for your consideration. Finally, just as a reminder, there are only two dates left to visit Santa at the depot, either this Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. or this Saturday from noon to 2:00 p.m. at 128 West North Street. The Public Affairs Committee will meet again on Tuesday, January 21st, at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
Thank you very much. Law and Ordnance Committee.
The Law and Ordnance Committee met this evening and discussed removing the two-hour parking signs on West Tiffin from Vine to Adams. We also discussed having quarterly meetings in lieu of monthly meetings unless a need arises. Deb Tyson inquired about implementing more one-way streets, and Jill Filiator informed us of signage in two alleyways off Main that need addressed. The Law and Ordnance Committee will meet again on Tuesday, January 21st, at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Report of Officers. Mayor.
I would ask that you pass the last resolution under Old Business, which is a second reading tonight, as an emergency. And Mr. Spar is here tonight to answer any questions you might have on the mitigation plan. I would also ask that you pass the four new business resolutions as emergency also, as we need to respond by year end with all of them. Also, as this is the final meeting of 2024, I'd like to thank all members of council for their support and help this past year and wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Director of Public Service and Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we close out this year, a couple of pieces of good news was just within the last couple of weeks that we went over to Hancock County and picked up a check from the Hancock County Park District for just over $34,000 for a project that we have on that bridge in City Park. And then we just received word from Wood County Park District that they'll give us $10,000 toward that shelter roof in Portage Park. So some good news to end the year with, and just thought we'd report that to you. And then this last piece of new business that talks about the Public Consulting Group LLC and some of the things can help us with collecting money from, I think Medicaid on Amos Runs. The Chief Root, if you'll have a moment to maybe address that project, if you would.
I don't know a whole lot about it, except for the Ohio Department of Medicaid has approved this public consulting group to come in and kind of start the legislation. First and foremost, they have to have the state say, yes, let's go ahead with this program. So they're at that point now, and now they're trying to get as many agencies involved to move forward with it. So they kind of need to know that, yep, we've got participation out there. We want to move forward and get this program going. So essentially what it is, is we only collect a small portion for Medicaid patients or, you know, when we transport somebody. This is federal money that's available that these, this individual group will go and set the foundation for this whole entire thing so that we can facilitate that additional money that is out there from the federal government. So we would like get our $300, let's say, just an arbitrary number, that's our third. But there's additional $600 that's available through the federal government that we could be getting, you know, and stuff like that. You know, so there's two-thirds more money that is available, and preliminary numbers right now, it's, you know, around $70,000 to $75,000 that we could be collecting that we just don't have, you know, coming in at this time. But with this public consulting group taking care of everything, we really have, all we have to do is show our numbers, give them our data, and we know we do it annually is what it's set at right now, and then it just comes back around. The biggest concern that they, everyone needs to kind of be aware of is we've got to do, we've got to pay in our third. So we pay in our third, it goes through the system, we get the two-thirds that the federal government would kick in, and our third back. So let's just say it's round number of $60,000. We've got to pay in the $20,000 upfront. We send it in, goes to the program, additional 40 comes attached to that 20, and we get the 60 back. So, and then we can, that's up to the man himself to figure out how to, you know, the money wise and stuff like that and where it all goes. But this has been, it's being done in several other states. They've kind of approached several fire chiefs, and it's only for public entities. You know, private companies could do this. So it's kind of one of those avenues that we just, we just got to get involved with. I really need it passed tonight, and like, you know, like the mayor said and everything, Chief Service Director, just because if we don't get, if I don't get that word probably by tomorrow, we're not going to get into it for 2025. We'll have to wait another cycle. But so far, we don't really see any negatives towards it. We do have to tie into like a three, three, three and a half year period.
It's a three-year contract that begins when we first start filing these claims. So the term of the agreement might actually be 40 months. What the public accounting group is doing, or consulting group is doing from my perspective is they're handling all of the cost reporting necessary to qualify for these reimbursements. And so they're putting the tools in place to be able to go and submit for payment from the federal government. What will happen, the federal government will reimburse the entity, and it then will flow back to us from what I can tell. Bottom line is this, it's accessing dollars that we can't access otherwise. Now, at the end of three years, we may figure out how they're doing it and be able to do it ourselves. Their fee is 10% of what's collected. From my perspective, not knowing anything about how to do it, well worth the 10% because it's money we're not accessing today, and we don't know how to access. But over the next three years, we may be able to learn what they're doing and how they're doing it to be able to do it ourselves. Whether we go that route or not, no idea, but we at least have three years to try to look at it from that perspective. And they don't get paid if they don't generate the revenues, so.
Yeah, that match, that initial investment, is that an annual investment or is that a one-time?
Just the one-time.
I, that I don't.
I think is what it is like. We would have to do that, and then it just comes right back to us, and then.
But it's just a one-time startup?
Well, I mean, on an annual basis, you would have to, but if.
Okay. But it is annual then?
Their 10%, like Steve was saying, is they, that's their fee. They get 10% of the whole entire thing of what you collect. But they only get paid when we get paid.
Yep.
There's no upfront, like if it, their estimate is 80 grand, they don't get any money until the money comes back to us, and then they get supplemented at that point.
I like the idea of it that it's not going to put an extra burden on city resources other than dumping their data over to them, and it's not putting any extra burden on, quote, the Medicaid people that use the service.
Correct. Yeah. It's just something that's been out there, and it's there in multiple states. This ODM, Ohio Department of Medicaid has now approved for this to be moved forward, but they are not going to front anything. ODM will not put the money upfront. That's why they're going, they're asking the individual entities, you know, to do that and say that, yes, we will put up our one-third of it, but again, it comes right back to us. We just got to front it upfront, and then it comes right back.
Is that 10% the total amount or our portion of it?
The total amount. Total collected is my understanding is.
Right, so if we put 20,000 in, in essence, they're going to earn $2,000 off of our 20. But again, they're going to go access another 60 or 40,000, I'm sorry, another 40,000.
Just to be clear, excuse me, go ahead, Santa. Okay. The law director and you have both reviewed this contract and are comfortable with it?
I viewed it from the terms. I didn't view it legally at all.
Okay. Yeah, you have different vantage points, but you're comfortable with the terms and you're comfortable with the language. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question yet. How does this bill, do you submit the billing on a quarterly basis, weekly?
Right now, it's going to be an annual. So we'll have to submit all those, all that data and information, which we did preliminary up to this point. You'd be surprised, we do run 1,100 Medicaid runs a year, so they did the estimated numbers that were conservative, and it's 70 to 77,000, you know, on billing.
So once a year, you'll submit the bill, and then once a year, we'll get the big fat check.
I hope. That's in theory, and what we're seeing, that's how it should essentially work, right?
You'll get it. Merry Christmas.
Alright, unless there's any other questions to end my report, I just, I want to thank everybody. It's been an interesting year in this new role, and I appreciate everyone having the faith in me to take on this new role. I've enjoyed working with Mayor Manel and Steph, and most of the time, Mr. Dan Rand. Been a learning experience with Steve, but the chiefs and our supervisors, and, you know, we have a really talented workforce, and I don't know that we say that enough, and certainly have enjoyed working with all you. And this isn't a goodbye speech. I just wanted to say thanks and looking forward to, to next year. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody, and thank you.
Director of Law.
Thank you. First, I just want to sincerely apologize for my late additions to the agenda. Total oversight on my part. I am very, very sorry that you got the, the new pieces of business so late. Second, I mentioned it in my email to you guys, we will need a motion prior to the reading of the CRA ordinance. I'll need a motion to table that simply because the school board has yet to consent to that. So we can't pass it until we get that school board consent, which hopefully will be coming very shortly after the, after the new year. So I'll need a motion to table that, please. And I think everyone else already touched on the emergency legislation, and that's all I have. Merry Christmas.
Director of Finance.
I don't have anything to report, just any questions you may have on the five-year plan or the permanent appropriations that we're going to have our last reading on tonight. Would welcome any questions you may have. If not, I echo the mayor and safety service and Steph's comments. I appreciate your patience as I continue to learn every week something new. So thanks for your patience, because I, I don't have the answers yet, but we'll, we'll continue to get them, and Merry Christmas.
Before we move on, just point a clarification. The tabled ordinances then would just carry over into the next year. We don't have a year-end drop-off. We don't have to reintroduce like state and federal legislature does. Perfect. Perfect, thank you. Alright, we will move into the public portion now. We have a couple people who request a time to speak. At this time, Deb Tyson, if you'd like to come up and address council, please do so.
Deb Tyson, 800 Woodward Avenue Lot 9. I just wanted to mention about, we had a public hearing on Vision RNG here and also electric aggregation. And I think that more research needs to be done on anything that's brought to our town, not just at a public hearing. I don't think that's enough. It's just a legal thing, and I would hope everybody do due diligence on that as far as all these pieces of business. It's quite a list for Christmas. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. The next person on the public speaking docket is Jill Filiator.
Good evening, Jill Filiator, 402 West Culbertson Street. I have two topics I want to talk about, but the first one is piggybacking on this new thing that you guys were looking at for your three-year contract on this consulting group. I'm just a little concerned by active listening that, I know that the law director looked at form, you looked at content, but have you guys even looked at this? My concern is this is my wheelhouse that I deal with, and usually the public consulting groups charge a little bit more overall. Do we confirm on the fine print? And that's all I'm going to say. Make sure before you go into a three-year contractual agreement that everybody here on council, because even, it's a great idea, but you have questions. And that concerns me that if we do not know, we could be getting into something that ends up with a higher market fee and, you know, three-year, non-negotiable, non-to-get-out-of contract. So please make sure that you are aware of what you're signing into when you're looking at that. That's the only concern I have on that. The main reason I was here is because I've been able to watch on video, which has been very helpful. I'm very grateful that you guys have moved it to the video format, and I didn't have anything to have to say, so I can just come and listen. I'm glad that I was able to come in during the finance, because my question at finance was looking at the monies that moved out of the collection of Vision 2020 into the park and rec back into the city. And it got moved back, wonderful. It is there, it's ready for splash pad, and I just got that confirmation. And I'm saying this so that the people that couldn't attend, because you don't film the committee meetings, just make sure that they understand that, yes, that money is there for that splash pad, that they are in negotiations with the original person that did the proposal for the planning. They know that it wasn't quite right, and they're making it right by us so that we can have that splash pad and have it built. But the money is there, your donations are there. They're not going to be just willy-nilly thrown away and not have the splash pad that everybody is with that goal of having the splash pad. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that, because it's not been addressed in any of the meetings since I, my last meeting in August. And I know that people were asking me, and I figured best way to get it is to get it out there. I thank you guys very much for that update. And that's all I really have, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. This time, we will open up to the general public. Anybody from the public that wishes to address council, we ask you to come up and state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak at this forum, we will move into old business.
An ordinance to amend the schedule of fees for all applications for certificates, permits, appeals, variances, amendments, and other matters pertaining to the administration and enforcement of the city's zoning code.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Hall to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That passes. It becomes ordinance number 2024-100. We need to table prior to reading.
I'll move to table the next item under Old Business.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Mendoza, a second by Podak, and that's on the CRA ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance has been tabled until the Board of Education acts on their side of things. Alright, next ordinance.
An ordinance to approve a loan from the revolving loan fund, UDAG, Fund Number 240, to Seneca Property Holdings LLC, disburse $750,000 from Fund 240 to make that approved loan and declared emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Santa Cassidy and a second by Baker. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance carries. It is ordinance number 2024-101.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to negotiate and enter into a contract with Seneca County Joint Ambulance District, Jackson Township, Seneca County, Ohio, for the provision of emergency medical services and declaring an emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza. I think the second was Lehman. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That passes. It's ordinance number 2024-102. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 941.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Foster, Ohio, relating to sewer rates and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance carries. It's ordinance number 2024-103.
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the financial recovery plan for the city of Foster, Ohio, and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, second by Cassidy. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That passes. It becomes ordinance number 2024-104.
An ordinance establishing the fiscal year 2025 permanent appropriations and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Hall, a second by Podak. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries. It becomes ordinance number 2024-105.
A resolution adopting and federally approved Seneca County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan of 2025 and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, second by Mendoza to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That becomes resolution number 2024-106, and that concludes the old business. We will move into new business.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2023-66, permanent 2024 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the general fund, school resource officer fund, and pension fund, and transferring funds from the general fund to the pension fund, and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Lehman to suspend the three reading rule. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
To adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Lake and a second by Podak to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That passes. It becomes resolution number 2024-107.
A resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the Department of, let me start again. A resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the department heads and safety service director and approving then-and-now certificates for said expenditures and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Lake to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That carries. It's resolution number 2024-108.
An ordinance authorizing and approving the proposed plan of operation and governance for the city of Fosteria's electric aggregation program for the purpose of establishing and implementing an electricity aggregation program and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Hall to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Mendoza, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
That carries, it's resolution number two zero two four dash one zero nine.
Must've stuck together. It's them out.
I got it.
All right, thank you. In ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute an agreement with Public Consulting Group LLC to facilitate participation in the ambulance supplemental pay, payment program and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Hall, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
No.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
No.
Lake?
Yes.
The vote of five to two, if that does carry, it becomes resolution number two zero two four dash one one zero. And that concludes new business. Do we have a need to go into executive session?
We do. Mr. President, I would ask that we move into executive session for personnel to consider employment, appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and probably just council members for the subject matter.
And no business to follow, likely?
Correct. I don't know, maybe the mayor wants to participate, whatever your judgment is, President.
And do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Lehman, a second by Lake to go into executive session for the matters emphasized as the first two on the agenda. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
All right, we will go into executive session at six thirty-two, there will be no business to follow.
You're welcome, Tom. How could I let you go without a card? Are you serious? Well, you're getting one. You'll get another one.
Yes.
Please come out of executive session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Lake, a second by Lehman to come out of executive session. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Kodak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
We are officially out of executive session at 7:00 PM. Is there any miscellaneous business?
Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Ditto.
Ditto from...
And especially thank the city employees. Sure. You know, because we know winter's here, it just hasn't came yet. In vengeance, but it will. Hopefully we've got a little snow for Santa.
Santa doesn't need any.
Magic does.
Santa would like to make a comment. Santa visits all over the world. There's no place on this planet where people care about each other any more than Fawcett or... Where no one's a stranger. When somebody is in need of help, they get help. They get help from friends, they get help from strangers. Bottom line is nobody's really a stranger in this community. We need to be very grateful.
Thank you, Santa.
Amen.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Santa?
Second.
Seconded by Lake for motion to adjourn. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Kodak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker? Paul?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned to 7:02.